To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, is there any additions or relations to the gentleman?
No, sir.
Is there motion to approve this?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay. We have a light attended tonight, but we'll start with the public hearings. Item one is a road closing petition for Mr. Greg P. Nickle. And it is a ten-foot unnamed alley lane adjacent to his property. And we have Mr. Nickle.
For me, Nickle, on behalf of the petitioner, Gregory P. Nickle. I appear before the commissioners back in April, petition to open this particular road to address the requirements of the state code, to eliminate what is called a paper street or alley. When commissioners opened that road, it then allowed me, on behalf of Mr. Nickle, to file for the petition, asking that the commissioners close that road, which simply extinguishes the paper street which was created by the recordation of the plaque. We have provided requisite notice in paper, in accordance with provisions of the code. And I would ask that commissioners consider favorably Mr. Nickle's request to close this road, which is adjacent to his house on other Rockville Street near Long Island.
Great. Is there anyone here to speak, in favor of opposition or this? Okay. Gentlemen, is there a motion? We can actually take action tonight? Is there a motion to approve item number one?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Great. Okay. Gentlemen, item two is presentation for the sheriff's accommodation award presentation. The sheriff isn't here tonight, but we do have Mr. Dave Morgan.
He is coming. In training.
Go ahead to...
Why don't we jump ahead to number three?
Go ahead.
Okay. Ministers, thank you. The Maryland Opioid Operational Command Center grant, that command center is what is channeling money to the state of Maryland from the opioid settlement. Each state has an allotment of that money. The first one here, item number three, for the detention center. In 2019, the state of Maryland passed House Bill 116 and said, we have to do certain things by the end of this calendar year, every county and the state. So we have to provide three different agent medication treatments to inmates who commit, who were screened, and who are opioid addicted. We have reentry coordinators, trying to remember all the different titles. We have physicians who were using a group from the University of Maryland, peer recovery specialists, excuse me, to folks who've been addicts in the past, who can counsel these people. Plus, we have counselors already on hand that we've had for numerous years, thanks to the health department. So what this money does is half a million dollars over the next two years pays for those doctors, pays wages and salary for, there's a dedicated medication nurse. They screen these people, they decide which medication they're on, they give these medications on a daily basis. Then the reentry people set up a program when they get out of referrals of where they have to go, then they follow up with them on the outside and make sure they're going to this amount of treatment. So we actually jumped on this about a year ago, at Ole Miss folks. And guess what? I'm happy that we got the money. Whether you question the program or not, we have without a doubt the model program for this state. So virtually every jurisdiction in the state has called and asked us to share our people, to send them down, how are you doing this, how are you accomplishing this. But it's because they work so well. So I know Ms. Gummer's unfortunate out here, but she did all the detail work in writing this particular grant.
All right. Great, Dan. So item number three is the Maryland Opioid Operational Command Center grant for $500,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay. And then item four is also just a grant from the Maryland Opioid Operational Command Center grant in the amount of $206,909. Is there a motion on that one?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see.
Good. I'll see you.
There we go.
Get that correct.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. This is short notice. I'm filling in for the sheriff who, I just found out about this, but nonetheless. To present these awards with this devities, it's really well deserved. Major Cutter and I, we meet every morning and we discuss what's going on in the office, in the community, every single day, every morning. So we know what happened the night before and what's going to happen during the day. And to have a group of people that took on essentially the criminal activity in this community the last six months, that's what we're here for. I have some statistics for you. This, I don't know, I can provide copies for you guys here with the exact numbers so you don't have to write everything down. Drugs off the street, there's 30 heroin capsules with a value of $600, over 10 pounds of marijuana with a whole street value of $35,000. Two pounds of crack cocaine with a street value of $77,000. Over a pound of methamphetamines with a street value of $8,000. 636 fentanyl pills, you hear about fentanyl in the media every day, with a street value of $12,720. 300 grams of fentanyl with a street value of $30,000. Also, U.S. currency that was seized, $29,136. Two handguns, one of them was a stolen handgun, the other one was a handgun recovered from someone that prohibited to own a handgun. Four search warrants, residential search warrants, two cellphone search warrants, and all that, the drugs and money, a total value of $192,456. That's in the last six months in this community. And then specifically, in less than a month, there was part of this group, 98 traffic stops that resulted in 22 vehicle searches. The drugs that were seized as a result of those, 320 grams of marijuana, eight grams of cocaine, 22 grams of crack cocaine, 14.28 grams of heroin, another 122 grams of fentanyl, 66 grams of methamphetamines, 31 grams of MDMA, nine doses of oxycodone, three additional handguns, one shotgun, another U.S. currency of $41,339. As a result of those, there were nine adult arrests, seven of the nine were felonies. In that last initiative, there was five adult arrests and one juvenile. But because of, you know, when you have a group that just takes the initiative to go out and do this job day in and day out, above what they're normally do, I mean, they're still taking their calls for service for, you know, their domestics and their accidents, and this is all above and beyond what they do each and every day. And as a supervisor, it's nice to be able to, you know, to have the, you know, support from them in the initiative that makes our job a lot easier. And to know that if you're committing crimes in Allegheny County, you're on notice for sure, because they're out there doing above and beyond what they could, what their task to do. So with all those, with all of that, I guess, commissioners, okay to present the awards?
Please.
Sergeant Nancy.
Appreciate you.
Corporal Hodeb. Sergeant Hill. Sergeant. Corporal Simeon. You have any questions?
No. Gentlemen, thank you. You know, you make our job easy, and the relationship between the commissioners and the sheriff's department, I don't think that would have been stronger. And, you know, I'm always in awe, I watched that video a couple of months ago, there's knuckleheads in front of the federal prison, wherever prison was, and trying to get you in trouble. And, you know, people were commenting, saying all this crazy stuff on Facebook. I thought you should tremendously restrict interprofessionalism and on behalf of the citizens that made all of this for help.
You know...
Thank you, guys.
In my 28 and a half years doing this, I don't have much time left, but, you know, this community, you know, these guys are as aggressive on crime as we can possibly be and have been. What happens, you know, after we get them there, we don't have any control over them. But it's, you know, it's been an honor. I know I've talked to each one of yous individually, but we have a good group in this community, and it's only going to get better. Great, you guys.
Thank you very much, guys.
Gentlemen, moving on to the larger consent agenda tonight.
Thank you, commissioners. Item 9 is a grant on the consent agenda. Item five is the Allegheny County Agricultural and Preservation Advisory Board appointment of Benjamin Sampson and Tim Carney, his members, and also appoint K.R. Robinhead as a new member of the advisory board, with terms will expire July 7, 2027. Item six is property and casualty insurance renewal, sign agreement with Travelers Insurance for our property and casualty insurance for fiscal year 2023. Item seven, community promotions to award $3,500 from community promotions account to the Western Maryland Chapter of the WDCR SCCA in support of the 2022 Polish Mountain Hill climb. Item eight is Care First Blue Cross Blue Shield Dental Plan renewal, and that's for July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. Item nine, Allegheny County Community Enhancement Program, awarding $12,500 to the town of Luke and additional $12,500 in landfill costs for demolition of a property to 101 to 103 Mullen Avenue in Luke, Maryland, also to award a contract to Miller Truck and Excavating LLC for the estimated debt amount of $22,500 for that job. Item 10 is an enterprise master lease agreement, allowing the commissioners to sign an enterprise fleet management agreement. This will be the first step for us to potentially lease vehicles as the need arises, since it's so difficult now to purchase vehicles. Item 11, Allegheny County Transit, 2022-23 bus service contract at Prosper State University, signed in MOU in the amount of $141,950 for one year. Item 12, request for award engineering contract to Flintstone wastewater plant upgrade, awarding that to GHD for the design, and the amount of $375,000. And last but not least, agreement with Pennwater Recycling LLC for Allegheny County recycling materials.
Gentlemen, is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All right. We do have one person signed up to speak about one of our consent agenda items, Mr. John Felton. Would you like to come on up and talk about the hill climb?
Thank you, commissioners. This is the 15th year coming up for the hill climb at Flintstone. Obviously, the big benefactor is the Flintstone Volunteer Fire Department and taking care of that community out there, which as the president of the Western Maryland Chapter is the number one bullet on my agenda, take care of the community and the fire department. So the reason for our ask for some help this year is we see with the rising costs and inflation and especially fuel, we don't know where we're going to fall with enough entries to make things meet, so to speak, of expensive versus the raised income. So we appreciate your consideration. We want to keep the hill climb going. Currently, I looked, before I came over here today, we have 35 entries from 10 states right now. So we're drawing people from Auburn down to the East Coast of the United States. I didn't see we have a guy from Florida, but there's Ohio, North Carolina, South Carolina. Obviously, a big contingency from Pennsylvania, because this is a Pennsylvania hill climb series event that we run here at Flintstone. And so the bulk of those guys are coming because it's a points race, much like NASCAR does, and so they're chasing points for the year or so. Anyway, we thank you guys so much. Like to invite everybody to come out and see us on Friday night, the 5th of August. We're going to have basically a block party, cruise in at the fire department, so cruise cars will be there, live music will be there, the fire department will be doing barbecue chicken and other foods that are available. So it's pretty much an outside event. We're hoping for nice weather. And then the hill climb itself goes off on Saturday and Sunday each day about 8:00 a.m. until 4:30 or 5:00 o'clock. There's no admission charge. You can come out, you can browse around in the pit, you can work your way up the mountain in the corners or whatever to see what we're doing. Again, it's a child-friendly event, as long as mom and dad are watching when cars are moving in the pits. But other than that, a good, a great time for people to get out and see racing equipment up close and personal. So, and anybody is invited up to the start line, that's usually where I've got my tents set up, and just come up there and see us, and we'll try to explain what we're doing and answer any questions if we can. Thank you guys so much for your time. Any questions?
No. Happy to help.
Yes, sir.
Hey, thanks. Okay. Up next, Mr. Glenn Stolman, speaking on Cache Valley Road.
Hi, gentlemen. How are you? I've been here before, and we're talking one more time. I can't seem to get any place by talking about the problem with the high speed on Cache Valley Road. So what I've done, I've done some homework, and on that letter, there's an address of a company that makes a unit, it hangs off a pole, you go by it too fast, it gets you. Color your car, your tag number, what kind of car it is, a date, and then in turn, you get a letter in the mail, and it costs you whatever the fine is. And I know this thing works because I did it to pay into it in Hagerstown last summer. And there's a sign out there now, a motorized sign, it was put in more than the night or early in the morning, a couple of days ago. It worked for a day, now it don't work. It's soft, there's no lights, there's nothing.
What kind of sign, Mr. Stolman? Shows the speed? Is that where you're working?
Shows your speed. But it only did it for a day.
But it's still there?
Still there, don't work.
Thank you.
That's something we can take up with the sheriff. But speed cameras, absolutely not.
Why not?
They're banned in Allegheny County. They're nothing but a tax grab.
I never heard of such a thing.
They're banned in county, when county roads...
I want to see that letter that says it's banned.
Okay.
Jason, do you have that?
I don't have it with me, but...
We can certainly provide.
We can provide. The commissioners took action on it a couple of years ago, I'll thump ahead.
If that's the case, then regular guns should be abandoned, traffic lights, traffic signs. What is going on?
No, just speed cameras, because, you know, you can't really fight them in court.
But you can slow down traffic. You're not doing a good job, is what the mound says.
Well, I don't wear a badge, Glenn, so...
You're the one that made the rule.
What's that?
You're the one that voted on the rule, made the rule there wouldn't be any...
Why aren't you talking to the sheriff about this issue?
Why don't I just walk over there and talk out the window?
I don't believe you.
Two weeks ago, there was a guy beating his girlfriend up in my upper driveway. We called the sheriff's department at 2:00 in the afternoon. We'll be right there. I ended up taking that girl to Sheetz in Corbinville to get a ride home. You know what time I heard from the sheriff's department, Commissioner? 11:30 that night. You know when he showed up? Noon the next day. What effect I would have been beating the hell out of that girl, and I would have went up and shot him, then he'd have been in trouble. Somebody on this board needs to do something about the sheriff's department. Craig Robinson needs more help. I just counted, when I come in, I counted, there's 14 deputy cars out in this parking lot. And it's not the first one. What are you going to do about it, Commissioner?
Well, eight years ago, we had 16, now we have 23, so I don't know, Glenn. We have more deputies than ever, and I'm really not going to listen to you disparage them, because they were just here. You know, you can ask them, they're all standing there.
You know what kind of answer I would get? Better talk to the sheriff about it.
Mr. Stolman, have you notified anybody else about the machine being out of order?
No. Not for me.
And how it can still be there, not work if you don't pay it up?
I'll tell you. I come here to these meetings, I get upset, and I leave, and I want to do it again. But something better be done about the speed on Cache Valley Road. Down here in front of the YMCA, there's two speed bumps, two. Just do something about Cache Valley Road.
I wish you would.
Dave, thank you. Jake, good luck to you. But you better get those speed cameras up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you guys have a nice year.
You too, sir.
Hey, Mike, see you.
Take care, Glenn.
Okay.
All right. Up next, Mr. Jack Mainfield.
This might not feel like someone, but we'll be performing that. Are you familiar with the tractor trailer action on coffee on June 18?
Yes.
Okay. That tractor trailer, okay, I'm just going to read it, say it. Tractor trailer action occurred on Route 36, Saturday morning, June 18, 2022. The tractor trailer was hauling 24 tons of coal, which was being delivered to ADS. For unknown reasons, the tractor trailed up Route 36 in front of the home that drove into Paisley, while leaving the road, a newspaper article said it was 100 feet. That's totally wrong. I was over measured, took pictures. While leaving the road, the truck traveled 68 feet before dropping into a four-foot-deep culvert, which is represented by photo number one. The tractor trailer then traveled an additional 70 feet in the ditch culvert, tearing out the earth on the right side of the ditch culvert in its path, represented by photos two, three, and four. Tractor trailer then went up over a five-foot bank, picture five, and traveled another 36 feet before straking and tearing out a five-foot diameter oak tree, totally took it out of the ground. That's represented by photos six and seven. You'll see part of the trunk, and you'll see what the tree cut up. Tractor trailer went down four-foot embankment, photo eight, before straking and bringing off another oak tree, photos nine, 10, and 11. Tractor trailer then traveled an additional 28 feet before coming into a stop. The tractor trailer did not lose the load of coal it was carrying. Also attached is a copy of the payload from, for a week that this gentleman made loads, some loads were as high as 49,000 pounds he was carrying on that tractor trailer. Keep in mind, this all happened on a level ground, no grade whatsoever. It traveled well over 150 feet, pulled out a six-foot diameter oak tree, and still continued. You have any questions about that? Now, I have some questions for you county commissioners. Took action on that new sign, that was hanging on Union Street, Henne Camp Street, and the first bench up on Jackson Mountain. What factors were you three considering when you imposed a 40-foot restriction on a truck going up and down Jackson Mountain, hauling coal? I'd like to know what your thought process was. Come on, folks. You talked about it, you made a decision. What was your thought process?
That was the recommendation of the Traffic Advisory Commission, regarding...
Yes.
And where's the Traffic Advisory Committee?
It was Adam Patterson, is the county representative for that. There's also members from...
S.H.A., M.S.T., the sheriff's department.
Does he have any knowledge whatsoever of what the weight that truck can carry? I mean, 32 footers are going down there are bad enough, let alone a 40 footer. And do you have any idea what a 40-foot truck will carry down that road? Any idea?
Yes, sir.
But yet you proved this. You proved it on what grounds?
It's the recommendation of the Traffic Advisory Commission.
They need to have a basis. They need to investigate, that's what I did.
We have individuals who have the knowledge and who make recommendations. I don't do public works. I can't tell you what size pipe needs to be laid in a ditch. That's why we rely on people to tell us those things.
I'm not talking about the ditch.
I'm giving you an analogy, Jack. We rely on the Traffic Advisory Commission, because those are the individuals who have the experts in this field to make recommendations. Just the same as Commissioner Verdi, Commissioner Cam Reilly can't tell you how much a 40-foot truck carries, we rely on individuals who can tell us that. The recommendation they made to us is what was enacted.
But they approved it. They have an obligation to know what they're proving. It's like Nancy Pelosi. You want to prove it before you read it. I mean, the 32 footers you're going up down there are bad enough, not only the 40 footer. And do you have any idea what a 40-foot truck will carry down that road? Any idea? But yeah, you proved this. You proved it on what grounds?
It's the recommendation of the Traffic Advisory Commission.
They need to have a basis. They need to investigate, that's what I did.
Jack, we have individuals who have the knowledge and who make recommendations. I don't do public works. I can't tell you what size pipe needs to be laid in a ditch. That's why we rely on people to tell us those things.
I'm not talking about a ditch.
I'm giving you an analogy, Jack. We rely on the Traffic Advisory Commission, because those are the individuals who have the experts in this field to make recommendations. Just the same as Commissioner Brody, Commissioner Caprilli can't tell you what, how much a 40-foot truck carries. We rely on individuals who can tell us that. The recommendation they made to us is what was enacted.
But they approved it. They have an obligation to know what they're approving. It's like Nancy Pelosi. You gotta approve it before you read it. Come on, don't give me that. Well, I'm gonna tell you. A 32-foot truck, fully loaded, carries 22 tons of coal. The truck itself weighs about 34,000 pounds, add another 44,000, so it's 78,000 pounds coming down Jackson Mountain. That's just what that tractor-trailer was carrying on the level on Palmby on June 18th, and it wasn't coming down with 17% grade. So, the next question might be moot point, so it wasn't approved by a motion of the county commissioners, it was a recommendation on this advisory board. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, there was no vote taken. All right, now, you three approved that 40-foot restriction. Does this 40-foot restriction apply to everyone and anyone using Jackson Mountain roads regardless of who they may know on this commission? Does it apply to anybody and everybody?
Jack, we're not entertaining questions like that.
Why not? It's in violation of the law. I think I have right to speak my mind. I've been putting up this for over two years, and I think the county commissioners can answer yes or no for themselves.
The restriction applies to any vehicle traveling on that road.
Okay, thank you. There you go. Those pictures you can keep, and there's a name and address on that piece of paper. Photos one and two is a tractor-trailer hauling a piece of equipment up Jackson Mountain on June the 9th at 18:18 p.m. Photos three, four, and five show the same tractor-trailer hauling two pieces of equipment down Jackson Mountain on June the 9th of 1922. And yes, again, there were no permits. But it was approved or not, I proved that. I wanna verify that code. Do you have that cane type hauling permits manager down in Baltimore? I'll give your phone number if you want it. Now, what I suggest you do with those, you know, that gentleman's in violation. Give him the sheriff's service citation. That's the same gentleman, the same trip, August the 1st, August the 7th, and August the 8th of last year, when Commissioner Brody sat there in the other building and said he had permits, when in fact, the man didn't have any permits. Now, when did Commissioner Brody inform the other two commissioners that he was investing in a strip mining operation? And that's certainly appropriate right now.
Jack, I don't think it is, because it's, you know, Commissioner Brody...
Oh, but it is.
...of business is not germane to this discussion, that's been going on long before.
The operation, the operation he bought into, one occasion, has shipped coal from Orton up to that strip job, to Bland, as they call it, and ship it back out. So, it does apply.
Jack, I'll answer the question. Commissioner Brody approached my office, and in fact, he began discussing that.
When?
I don't have the date. At that point in time, I advised him, and I can tell you, it was since the last time you were here.
I was here December 6th.
At that point in time, it was since then. At that point in time, I informed him that he would have to abstain from any decisions made about any sort of coal transportation, including Jackson Mountain.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah. Yes, indeed.
Let's be quick, you're five minutes.
Well, I think I'm on that list. Excuse me, ma'am. Is Mike Four on that list? Does he?
Um, Jake has.
Mike Four and Five four.
Yes, ma'am.
He can have my time. He's speaking for me.
I'll reach my time with Mr. Nightgale also.
All right. If I may.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are any of you commissioners aware that the Jackson Mountain, Jackson Mountain three or four mines apply for an additional 21 acres to amend its existing permit? It hasn't been approved yet, but they apply for another 21 acres up there, which makes a total of 95 acres. Now, are you aware of that?
No.
Oh, I just have one thing I'd like to say. I've talked to everyone before, and I live at the corner of Jackson and Hennig Camp Street, and I have issue with owner trucking. Two guys. I made perfectly clear to the town loan company and everybody that those guys have made it. The one guy come out, he's running the board, he's gonna be able to move a car and really get upset. The next step with him is, I've come to the county, or I've went to the town loan company, I've been to you guys, I've called the sheriff's department, Bureau of Department of Transportation, I've called everybody I know to call, Mr. Beaman, it's no joke. The next time he sells that truck in my driveway, I've asked for your help. I am going to clean his clock, and I'm gonna make it known that I got no help from nobody. None.
Sir, I'd really, without being your attorney, I'd recommend you not make statements like that.
That's right. And it's not, the principle is, nobody can make a saving, and nobody can do anything. It's two gentlemen. He can stand and throw me the finger all day long, and hit that jack break starting at 5:30 in the morning, and rumble down off that hill. It's Mr. Owner's grandson. I know who the other guy is, but I'm fed up with him. If he did it to you guys, you would have blown your lid a long time ago. In front of my family, he decides he's gonna throw me the finger. Okay, I've asked for help.
I understand.
Creed?
Next question. Do either one of you three commissioners have any idea how many triaxes would go up and down Jackson Mountain in a day? There's no way you would know, unless you were told, isn't it? In 13 days, there was 134. Now, that's a lot of heavy-duty truck traffic on that road. I'm arguing over the potential weight of a 40-foot triaxle, which is approaching 80,000 pounds, if not more. Now, do you think the state of Maryland was correcting the placement of the 10-ton weight restriction on Route 40 going through Frostburg, which is only a 9% rate? Certainly got an opinion on that? Come on, somebody say, somebody say something, you're being vague, at least answer my questions.
I think that was appropriate.
Thank God, someone there can talk.
Is there another way, Jack? This whole thing, because I'm sitting here and I'm listening. I've tried to help, I can't get help in owl. I have never shipped coal up there, so that is a fact.
But you will eventually.
No.
Okay.
Jim Black called the other day, and I said, "Not for Jackson."
I'm glad you mentioned Jim Black. Let me tell you, Mr. Jim Black.
But there's no sense in getting mad and yelling at me. I was the one who tried to help you.
I know. Well, Jim Black was the one that come over and offered...
After the last time, when we posted the road, the very next morning, I get a call from them saying, "Guess what? We're gonna sue you, because you can't do that to a road." I said, "Jim, we're in a tough spot."
You can't do it?
We can't.
There's the proof right there, you can. That's common knowledge.
But you can't preclude, because, again, speaking from personal experience, when I work for Jimmy, where do we start in the coal business?
I have no idea.
Okay, right there, halfway down the side of East Mountain, saying Bank Road. They can't preclude you from making local deliveries, so that reason that's posted, so you don't come awake and get down through Frostburg for deliveries. But if you have a business in Frostburg, they can't stop you from delivering to a truck. That's the law.
There is also reasonable concern for safety of personnel and property along the routes gone. That's why Route 40 going through Frostburg is posted as it was. You know as well as I do, because of the fire, they claimed two lives.
It is, but it wasn't the trucks that was going to...
Isn't it sad? But it still went through 40, it was a heavy-duty truck. Isn't it sad it cost two lives to do that?
I think it's sad anytime.
Does that what it cost on Jackson Mountain?
I don't think we can legally shut it down if we wanted to, Jack.
I'm getting to that, I've heard that over and over for two years now. There are alternative routes that's gonna cost money.
Uh, let's see. Actually, I cost op you there. We explored that.
You what?
We went so far as to explore all of the routes up there.
Okay.
It is gonna cost money, very clearly, it's gonna cost millions of dollars. So, it's easier said than done, and you can't do that.
How much is one life worth?
I'm just saying what it costs.
All right. How much is one life worth? Can't put value on it, can you?
To be quite honest, yeah.
Well, let me tell you something.
The commissioners went so far as to explore that, to see if there was a way it could be done. There's no easy way to do that. Could you do it?
Yes.
No, you would.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the one county commissioner, you mentioned you had a surplus of $4.5 million. What's the problem with designating a little bit of that and getting the coal truckers and strip job operators to co-fund it with you?
We could do that all over the county and spend that money 10 times over.
I ain't worried about all over the county, I'm worried about the property directly beside my property.
There's more than one street in the entire county.
I've been to many county commissioners, and I've heard everybody else complaining. I ain't heard one person, one person here complaining. And I reviewed your meetings on the internet, and not one person complained. Okay.
I'm at the base of that problem, just like the law is at the base of backbone mine. I want a county to be interested in buying me out.
Now, do you use Allegheny County Commissioner's school, the triaxles, union, Jackson Mountain route poses potential hazard to property and individuals living along the Jackson Mountain road? Look at those pictures. Pictures one through six are signed each on Route 40 that the state of Maryland felt was appropriate, following that accident out of Frostburg that caused those two lives. And then go to photo number seven, which is the sign that's an over 40 feet, allowing one Jackson Mountain road. That pales in comparison to what the state of Maryland did. And then look at photos eight and nine. That's the wall at the bottom of Jackson Mountain, it's a 98-degree turn. And remember, gentlemen, just about eight months ago, you had a tractor-trailer run away and skidded 450 feet before you got a stop. Another 450 feet, you would have been through that wall. That wall was built in the 30s by the WPA. How much weight do you think it's gonna stop? Creed, I'd like to invite Jim Black with you for a moment. That gentleman came up to me, and I think I reported to you before, only one other meeting. Firstly, offered to...
Jack, is this a new sign?
That's a new sign, that's right.
That's a new sign.
That is, yeah.
And that was because you came in here and asked for something to be done, and the Traffic Advisory Commission did something?
They have...
No.
Whoever, yeah, that is, whoever advised the 40-foot truck limitation, had no knowledge of weight limits. Absolutely none.
What would your limit ideally be? Or none, no trucks?
I'd like to have the limit that they have on Union Street, Frostburg, 10-ton G V W R. 20-ton, I'm sorry, it's 20-ton. That's your options. Now, I want to finish with Jim Black before sidetracks here. That gentleman stopped in my driveway. We had a nice conversation. Then we went up the next day, went down one of them other roads. I understand whether he was going over to Summershead to those people on that program, I don't know. But he promised I was gonna be compensated for the end of my driveway, and I ain't seen a damn penny yet. And he also offered to pay me wheelage for every truck going up and down Jackson Mountain. And I thought, I'm not entitled to that. So, he called me the next morning, I told him I didn't want the wheelage. He said, "What about the driveway?" I said, "I will take that, because I'm sure it's I'm entitled to that." I ain't heard another damn word from that man since. So, his word is supposed to go through the window there. Now, as far as your answers, an alternate route, it's gonna cost money, buy me out, and I'll be gone tomorrow, I'll be gone in six months. Can't do it that quick, I'll be gone in six months. Or decrease the size of those trucks. If you decrease the size of those trucks, I'll guarantee you, I'll find a way down off that mountain, because it'll stop being economically feasible for them. It's all about the dollar, folks, and that's what I'm facing right here. The coal revenue is more important to you than my life and my property. Now, this is two years of this bullshit, and I'm getting fed up with it. And this is gonna stop here. I'm gonna keep beating this horse, and I will find somebody that'll call you two, you three, to account too, buddy. Believe me, I will.
And Mr. Caprilli, I'd like to thank you. Because you're the only one sitting up there on that board that shows a little bit of concern. The only one, always, and I hope that that is being videoed, because if any of those trucks run through my home, I've asked you for help.
You know what? It's insulting that you all came from the back.
It is insulting. No, 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 no. It's insulting that you sit there on your ass and do nothing, as always. Mr. Caprilli, thank you for your time.
I have one more comment I want to make.
I've had enough of this.
Well, I have too, but I'm not getting anywhere.
But, well, I don't know what to do, Jack.
I have to come down here and talk to you any damn time I want.
You do, and you're kind of a public county commissioner meeting, so enough of this.
Duties of the office of county commissioners, an act laws for protection of commercial public...
Lee, this is enough of this. This is enough of this. You've come over for two years, we've tried to help you. We've tried.
Tried, yeah, you did, you put a new sign out.
Oh, but it's never enough, is it?
It didn't change anything.
You're not gonna be satisfied till there's not one truck coming down that mountain.
If they use that 40-foot truck by God, this works.
I've had enough of that.
Yeah. Damn enough to you, I'll be glad when you won't be sitting there.
Great, you can talk to someone else, and you know what? They won't be able to do a thing either. So, enough of that.
Somebody will sooner do something. Yeah, somebody will do something. Do you have those pictures of the... Yeah, no, I want you to save them, because that's a gentleman that needs a citation. I hope you will follow up on that. Do something.
I'll save for record before we close out tonight. These guys are as concerned as I am about, you know, the people in this county, so I just don't want to put that for a record.
You wonder why people come to the public office? Ministry of Defense?
Nothing, sir.
Attorney Beaman?
Nothing.
Mr. Caprilli?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's it, gentlemen. Our next public business meeting will be Thursday, August 4th, 5:00.